Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning. Thank you for joining us for the Legislative and Human Resources Committee meeting for Tuesday, June 26th. Do we have any public comment today? All right, seeing none. Oh, yes. Come up, please, to the podium. And can we get your name and address? Thank you.
My name is Lou Chamberlain. I'm a resident of Kent County. I live in 2025 Shadow Creek, Kentucky, Cascade Township. I'm also co-chair, along with Kate Walters of the First Steps Commission. First of all, I want to thank this committee and the commission as a whole for the thoughtful process and the careful consideration that you're giving to our proposal for an early childhood program. This is an issue that I've been passionate about for nearly 20 years. When Doug DeVoss and Kate Walters called us together to form the First Steps Commission many years ago, the first thing that they did was educate us. We spent the first year just learning, and not, as it turns out, as fast as a two-year-old kid. We learned about brain architecture, and that a child learns more in the first three years of their life than at any other time, and that stress, which can happen in any family, can actually inhibit brain growth. We also learned that by investing in early childhood programming, there is a proven return on that message, which is derived less spending on special education, brain repetition, criminal justice, et cetera. It just makes sense to invest early when interventions can have the most impact, rather than waiting until later when problems arise and the costs are much higher. A child starts behind, stays behind. And conversely, the child who receives support at an early age will become a contributing member of the community and the workforce. So, in my mind, early childhood is also an economic and workforce development issue. An early childhood village is not only the right thing to do for all of our children, but it's also the smart thing to do for our community as a whole. And I would urge the commission to allow this village to go forward to the voters for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Any other public comment today? All right, Commissioner Melton.
Good morning. My name is Upsy Melton, and I live at 356052 Street, Upper Michigan. Some may know me as my Commissioner hat, but today I am not wearing that. I am wearing a hat representing 44,500 students' children who have been identified by this group that has been put together as possible leads for early childhood intervention. And I would like to give all of them, please. I'm also here representing seven, actually nine, special education speech therapists teachers at just one school in Kent County. And we did some research, and we figured out that all of them, all of them, not just a couple, all of them have identified in the last few years, let's say few, it's three, that they have had two, at least four more students every year in their special education, early childhood special education, or E C S E programs. Probably would not need a special education price tag on their learning, or even in special education class, had they had an early intervention in their home, helping their parents understand how best to educate their children. The cost just for this one little school savings is over $4,500. $450,000, there we go, $450,000, which is just one small school in Charlotte. So I'm sure that if we commuted that with all of the schools and all of our districts that bind themselves at kindergarten age or younger with special needs children, that that savings would be even greater. The sponsors of this program show us that this is not a partisan decision. This is very nonpartisan. And it's a good investment in our future. And our future, in my opinion, is the best investment that we can make. We are not being asked to cast this village. We are only being asked to take this to the voters. And it's already been, at least in the research that the First Steps did, that they have found an overwhelming number of persons who said that they would support such a village. I'm troubled that we are not taking this whole package to the voters, but I am certainly confident that this may come up with ways to support the point two five. Given the critical importance of this to our county and our children, I believe it's important to give the voters the opportunity to vote on this package. Why would we not want to build our future on a very strong foundation? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other public comment today? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item two, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Corn dyke, support by Commissioner Vonk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we do have a pretty long agenda, I guess, for us today. So we have a couple different performance measurements before us. And Andy, are you here? Five-minute update.
I did practice this.
Can you time it?
I did not practice doing five minutes at all, but I'll do my best. Delinquency case does not equal a D E O. So, I mean, again, just looking at the total filings, you kind of have to weigh that in how much work each case type takes. So, we have actually done a few, you know, kind of tweaks or minor adjustments, taking a little bit off this judge because maybe the case types that he or she is hearing is a bit severe as well. So, yeah, right now, like I said, I mean, we're getting back. We're processing our cases, we're getting through what we need to do.
Good to hear, thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow up on that issue, Andy, when is the next S C A O analysis of the judge calls or the judge?
Yeah, I believe we just got one, they just completed one that came out in March or April. I don't think they were recommending any additions. I have to check on that to be sure. And what they did this year in, through the month of May, is they did a new judicial time study. And that's where these numbers come from. About 10 years ago, they give judges spreadsheets, and pretty much in 15-minute intervals, they have to say what they're doing, what case they're working on, et cetera. For two or three weeks, they had to do that. It might have been four, actually. And through that, it's a state line that every judge in the state has to do at every level of court. They have to do it. The Lansing, actually, the National Center for State Courts, do that, they decide what the appropriate case weight will be. And then each case type is assigning a weight, and then you kind of look at a three-year average of how many filings that has to case to see, okay, this is how many judges, you know.
Do they make their recommendation every two years?
Every two years.
Okay. So also, kudos on the work of the National Health Corps, which are excited about that opportunity and continuing to work in how you do on that. And I'm a little concerned that you're reporting that there are service delays from the National Health Agency. I'm personally aware of the financial issue, but I would hope that that would not interfere with the response or nature of the response for any of these contracts. So if in fact there are delays, I would like to know that, if that affects.
Any other questions for Andy today? I just have one, Andy. On page 10, we're talking about adolescent sex offender treatment programs. On the second line, it says juveniles completing an assessment within 56 days. Does this, this might dovetail into Commissioner Steck's question. Is 56 days kind of the state standard? Can we get them assessment prior to 56 days? Is it a provider issue?
No, it's not a provider issue. The adolescent sex offender treatment program in our county, that we do that. We have our own probation officers that do that. Yeah, the explanation for that could be, again, sometimes it gets a place of tension that's harder to get to. Sometimes they are, you know, you need to get with parents.
Okay.
Probably try to take as many kids as possible into that program to make sure they're appropriate. So, you know, sometimes there's a little bit of a wait in the period with that. No, I did notice a few of those, the timeliness in some of those assessments. I think the first assessment was a little bit, a little bit, so.
Yeah, I just have concerns because, I mean, a lot can happen in 56 days, in their own home especially. So just wondered how we assess, how we determined that metric, and then can we improve it? Or do you think there's any room for improvement there? That's kind of, we're hitting what we can.
No, I believe, I think it'd be that, that number in many years.
Okay, cool.
But getting a little bit of order turnover or not having as many workers, that's no one else's issue, that's our issue.
I, okay, great. Oh, Commissioner Womack.
When it comes to criminal case filings, do you know why those are going up to a main steady point down?
So no files, I mean, they were down, then you have the page two, that's. Eighty-four. Yeah, we, in 2016, it was 3,037, 27,000, 3,074.
Sixty-four.
And we're expecting 3,200 in 2018, so we're expecting it to go up. Twenty eighteen. That's, please don't hold me to that expectation. I, that's kind of an educated guess on my part. And I don't, sometimes, sometimes it's a function of how many courts on the street is how many crimes you see. But yeah, that is kind of a, I would guess, educated guess on that. And I hope it's always going to go down. But we just, we have to deal with whoever brought it for us.
And there's complaints that prosecutors are overcharging people for one crime, they're getting charged with four or five felonies for one crime, with each felony they're charged during that one crime count as a case filing?
I'm moving in my case, ready? No, each, each case could consist of multiple chapters.
Okay, okay, so the multiple charges. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it, all your work. Awesome. All right, moving on to item four, County Clerk Register of Deeds Performance Measurement Review. Our clerk Lyons.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having me today. I do sit in the seat right next to you every other week, but my name is Lisa Ustewis Lyons. I am the Kent County Clerk Register of Deeds, and I have been in office for the last 18 months, almost. Just want to thank the board, the administration, and staff for helping to make these last 18 months as smooth a transition as it could possibly be. That really has been kind of the word to sum up my experience. It's changes and transitions, and it's really been, it's really been quite an experience and a partnership, moving with so many different pieces that fit together to make this government and my office work for the people of Kent County. So I'm very appreciative for that partnership. And I also appreciate the opportunity to share where we have been and where we are going this last year. You will see in this presentation, we'll talk, I'll introduce you to my leadership team. We'll talk briefly about the alignment with four key areas, the key metrics, significant accomplishments in our office, along with key collaborations, potential budget or other issues, and just looking ahead. I'm very blessed to have a team that is really, truly works great together, and they truly have servants' hearts. They come to work every single day prepared, they know what they're doing, from the chiefs that really helped me run this office, and all the way down to the front line, those people who are there to serve our constituents, day in, day out, with dedication and competence that really does this county justice. I'd like to introduce, from my left, Kim Perry, my senior office administrator and assistant. We have Jerry Uzarsky, our elections director. We, I would say he's the, he's now one of our senior leadership staff. Again, transition being the key word this last year. Rob McCumber, my chief deputy county clerk. Jerry Chaya, my chief deputy register. And the newly appointed Amy Moilenin, our chief deputy county clerk, to round out our leadership team. How we align, our priority alignment with the county, we do provide stable and predictable filing and recording fees. We are good stewards of taxpayer dollars, always trying to be efficient and effective in everything that we do. Our accurate records help keep our public safe, and our citizens, as we collaborate, we work with the citizens and locals to run our elections. And we are continually working to innovate our operations in the Clerk Register of Deeds office, hoping and striving to be a leader and a pilot among our peers throughout the state. And this all leads to a higher quality of life for our residents. Moving on to key goals and metrics, we'll start with our Register of Deeds office. Our first metric is that we record all documents received within five business days with 99.5% accuracy. For 2017, we had 108,430 total documents. 100% of those were recorded within five days, most of them on the same day, but we consistently do meet that accuracy goal. Moving on to our vital records in the clerk's office, a similar metric is used along with the Register of Deeds office. We want to ensure 99.9% accuracy when recording, and we've met that goal in 2017 while processing 27,085 records. And that includes our birth, marriages, deaths, gun permits, business registrations, and military discharges. In addition to creating new records, we've received over 52,000 requests for existing records in 2017. We processed 100% of those within four business days. Moving on to probably what gets the most attention from the public, and that's elections. Our role in elections is really kind of akin to air traffic controller. We work closely with local clerks who maintain our voter rolls and help to administer the election on Election Day. We also play a vital role as it relates to implementing the canvas, which I believe is one of those checks and balances that helps ensure the integrity and security of our election operations on Election Day. And we have a great board of canvassers who you all have appointed to do that work on behalf of the people, and they, they appear and do a very great job canvassing the election results after that. So I like to think that our work really starts, you know, our, our work on Election Day actually starts after Election Day. We do receive many voter registrations in our office each year, about 9,500 in 2017. And just the way the law is set up, while it would be more efficient for us to process those, when they come to us, the law is set up that the local unit maintains and manages those records. And so we transmit those registrations down to the locals, and we do that within five business days, getting them to the clerks as soon as possible to ensure they have the accuracy of their rolls. There'll be a little more to talk about in elections later in the presentation. We will move on to our court office, our court side division. Because of the sheer number of filings that we do process, I know you heard from Andy, who really kind of gave a great overview of the circuit court, we process a sheer amount of, sheer volume each year, and the sensitivity of those files that we handle, we look for a higher accuracy rating, or accuracy performance, and have historically striven for 99% accuracy. And in 2017, we did exceed that with 99.5% accuracy. It is rather, I mean, it should be expected, but it is rather impressive, given that we have handled over 340,000 files in our office last year. Additionally, the court office processed over 80,000 requests for information or copies of our files, and 100% of those requests were processed within five business days. I'm not sure, it's not widely known, but we do work very closely with our Circuit Court Division, or with our Circuit Court over there, and the partnership is one that I think is really important to note, and how we do work together cooperatively. I can't say the same for the experience that other county clerks have in counties throughout the state, or other circuit courts experience with their county clerk's office. So to not note that, I would be remiss. It's very, very indicative of how we operate here in West Michigan, and it's something that really is important, because we all work for the people. We do work with them, we collect all fines and fees and restitutions for the circuit court, and that was in 2017, we collected almost, almost $3.5 million. And that, that gets, you know, that gets put into the budget, and really, it really is a service that we provide to be able to make, you know, victims whole and make sure that administration of justice is done on that end as well. Moving on to significant accomplishments. Again, I've been eligible for recall for six months now, almost, so I think there's a big accomplishment right there, being the new, the new kid on the block. Like I said, it has been quite a transition and quite a learning opportunity. So there are, there are truly a lot of personal, professional accomplishments over these last 18 months, but to highlight some of them for the office, the new election equipment dominated this, this first year. A lot of time and energy for years went into this intensive project, and it's one that I worked on from legislation when I was a house representative, all the way to this clerk. And with, with that transition and accomplishments, this brought us Jared, who's been on board with our, with our team since the beginning of December of 2017. Jared worked with one of our main vendors and was instrumental in the, in the November rollout of our election equipment, and he remains, he remains instrumental, working with our local clerks as we go into this 2018 August primaries and general elections. We got 123 precincts in November of 2017 used the new equipment, and the remainder will implement this next August, or this coming August. Another accomplishment is, we can say goodbye to election magic and hello to election night reporting, update in real time on the county website, with an interactive map that, that we think is going to, is going to be just a hit with not only the campaigns and candidates, but the, you know, the public as well, who just wants, you know, updated information as, as it comes in. And it really is one of those, one of those technological advances that we were able to harness. And I can say, with the exception of counting our absentee ballots, our absentee counting boards, when we get the results, the public will get the results. And we're really excited about that. Jerry and our team and deeds continue to make great gains in encouraging e-recording in our Register of Deeds for, for land records, to speed up the land records recording process. We now record 60% of our records electronically, and that saves the county and the customers time and money. That's up about 10% from last year, I think you were about 50% last year. I touched on this a little bit earlier, but when our office talks about collaborations, we certainly, our relationships with the local municipal clerks is as high among those collaborations in serving the citizens, as well as, as well as the election operation. With the rollout of the new equipment, we've been able to do some great things in terms of working with advocates and people with disability community to introduce their constituents to the new building equipment for demonstrations and being available to answer questions and things like that. So we've really, we've really attempted to do some outreach in areas where we know there will be, there will be a change when they go to the polls with those, with that equipment. Few additional collaborations of importance, the Legal Assistance Center is very useful collaboration with our court division. A lot of people, and we joke, but, you know, even some of the, even some of the deputies in the court office joke about, just send to the second floor, send to the second floor. We get a lot of traffic in our court division. And there are people who come in, and they, they may not even know where they're supposed to go. They just know they're here, they're supposed to be in that building, and, and a lot of them come and are looking for legal advice, which my staff cannot provide. So the fact that we can steer customers to the public, to the Legal Assistance Center, is very, very helpful, both for us to be able to, in some way, answer questions, provide a service, but also to them as well, to get what they need. E-recording through our mortgage entitled companies, we did touch on. Kim and our files team always enjoys attending the back-to-school community events to answer questions about getting the needed land records and documents for kindergarten enrollments. We're kind of a hit because we bring Andy, and the kids are willing to that. We're kind of a hit because we bring Andy and the kids are willing to that. Moving on to potential budget issues or other issues, our office handles an amazing amount of, of work and while a lot of it can be, can be streamlined utilizing harvesting technology, we also are a service center where we have, where we have people come to our office in regular flow. And so that is sometimes a challenge to make sure that while the paperwork can get done, the actual human to human interaction, we have this, we have the staffing to accommodate for all of that. And so we will be looking at our staffing levels just to ensure that we've got the number right and we've got the, and that we've got the structure the way it should be as well. In a general comparison, counties throughout the state, we have, we do have a very lean staff. As I was transitioning into this office, I was going through some old files, I learned that we are at about 1974 staffing level, which again, because we've been able to utilize technology is, is part of the reason we've been able to do that. So we are lean, we just need to make sure that we don't get too lean that we can't be efficient or effective in our service. We have about half the population of Oakley County and about a third of the staff that they knew, just to kind of put one comparison on it. In terms of wages, we, we seem to have a retention problem in our, in our court division. It is a, it is quite, it's quite a, a dynamic environment to work in and I can say the same for the circuit court department as well. There's not a lot of, you know, there's a lot of high demand, it's, it's always of a urgent nature, there's, there's court rules that have to get followed that are always changing and we've got a staff that, we have a staff that always needs to be up and prepared for this. So the work that Amy and recruit do is truly, truly remarkable, but we do lose a lot of those good employees over to the circuit court for almost, almost similar positions that are just simply classified higher on a pay scale. And so we may be reviewing that because we don't want to train any of the people that really, you know, really serve our office very, very well, only doing kind of similar work in another area. We want them to know that in the clerk's office, they are the, changing technology is always a challenge to a budget and so we are working to upgrade from years of obsolete equipment and we're doing the best we can to be creative with how we can do that and cycle, you know, cycle some of our old equipment through. We have been doing inventory last year of our, our equipment. I have found that almost all of it was considered by our IT as functionally sort of technologically obsolete, which means, which means at some point there will no longer be service to the equipment provided by our county. So we are continuously, continuously working to, to make sure that we are, that we're operating on state-of-the-art equipment that ensures our accuracy and effectiveness. Election equipment, I just want to thank you very, very much for working with my office on those upfront funds that you provided from the CIP to, to get the implementation going and looking forward there, we'll, we'll have to budget for maintenance in years five through 10 and also for the next purchase, whether that's, you know, 10 years down the line, 12 years down the line. I don't want to take for granted that we will have these state and federal habit funds like we did this last time around, so that will obviously kind of be on our minds as well. There's legislation that County Clerks Association has advocated for and it seems to be passing through the legislature to allow for counties, the county clerks to keep the filing fees instead of refund them to the winner of these primary elections. I've been advocating if that does go into, if that does come into fruition, that those funds be reserved for updating election equipment so that we have some type of, some base structure to work from when that time comes. But we'll see if that happens. I don't know where they're at with that. I don't, I may be the only one on that ship, so. Looking ahead, we are in the process of upgrading or getting new software system for our land records management and our file records management in titles, our vital records division and our deeds office. We are working in 2003 version today and the version we are working with was a, designed to be a land records management system, but we were able to, we were able to
Retrofit.
Make it work in some way, shape or form for our vitals. We're looking for something that, we're not trying to fit, we're not getting around the goal anymore. We want something that works for the needs of our office, not making our needs in the office work with the system that we have. And we're very fortunate to have our, our register of deeds automation, technology automation fund to be able to ease the strain from the general fund budget to be able to do that, but 2003 system. And it is kind of a perfect timing as well as we go into getting onto Windows 10, this system can no longer support, Windows 10 cannot support the system that we're on. So that's how obsolete our system is. So that's a big project coming for next year. Also, this has been a passion of mine to ensure transparency and accountability in, in elections and I've talked with a lot of you, not, I, I've listened to a lot of you as you've come to me as well. Brace yourselves because we are hoping for 2019 implementation of campaign finance software where you can report online and not have to walk down to my office. Although we do like to see your faces come in, but we, we think it's time to step into the 20th century to be able to do that. We continue to, I meant, I meant, we continue to, to put an emphasis and focus on document, file retention and purging as prescribed by the law for in our court division, for court file, case files and things like that. We transfer after, after so many years, those files that aren't permissible to be heard, go to our archive center, which I would love, if any of you want to take a tour of our community archive center, I would love to, love to post that sometime. Another, one other issue we've got is reconfiguration of our office. That needs to be looked at and I'm looking forward to working with Al down the line. We do need to just evaluate that. There is no privacy or discretion for individuals who come to our office to discuss their records. And I think, I think that's kind of important to look at, our setup configuration sometimes is not entirely efficient for the flow of our office operations, so we'll be looking at that as well. And then finally, but not, not least at all is we're looking at records, the security of our office and making sure, they are called vital records, and making sure that the security that we provide both, both technologically as well as, as well as in the hard copy within our office is that that our residents can be confident in as we protect their, as we protect their vital information, their vital records and certain. Did that.
All right. Thank you, thank you so much. Any questions for the clerk, Commissioner Skiggs?
Thank you, Lisa, appreciate that. Two questions, one on the, you know, the Albury 20th Century quote. We have a 20th Century campaign finance report system at the state called Mertz. Please, I beg of you, bring us into the actuals 21st century or the best of the 20th century and something that we can, can work with. That's not a question. But here, here's an actual question, it's not for a clerk. Clerk lines referenced HB 4810 and its similar bills about the non-refundability of the, of the ballot fee. I would encourage us to consider taking a position on this at some point. I think that this is a really bad idea. You know, user fees I think are fine for parks. I think that they can work for some other aspects with register of fees, but I don't think we should make democracy a user fee based system. And I think that the hundred dollar, I'm glad that the bill went from not raising the hundred dollar fee, but it still kept it non-refundable. I think this is an unsalvageable bill. I think that if current laws, I understand that as you get your refundable feedback, if you get 5% of the vote out of proof that's, that you have some support, I think we should consider taking a position on this into a legislative committee to make sure that, that we're not placing financial burden on people that want to be candidates and we're letting every citizen have a chance to make it regardless of financial situation.
Ma'am?
Sure.
Thank you for mentioning Mertz. In 2013, when campaign finance reform was done, went into effect, part of that, part of that reform required the state to provide Mertz to all counties. You know, we're still, it's 2018 and we're still waiting on it. They say next quarter, but to be perfectly honest, I've had this conversation with Jared as well as Rob, we are not inclined to take the state on that, which is why, frankly, because we think there's something, there may be something better out there that our county can utilize. So that's why we are looking ahead to, to the possibility or the probability that we may not be using the state, you know, the state provided software system and doing, doing our own. As it relates to the user fees, I also appreciate you bringing that up. I was chair of the elections committee for four years and that the refundable, the non-refundable filing fees has always been an issue with the clerk's association at that time. I didn't, you know, I never supported that for kind of the similar reasons, but, but my position, and I think it's clear with our association, if they are going to continue to advocate for that and it does get traction, I do believe if we go that route, then that funding should be for the administration and upgrading of our election equipment for the public in that regard. So I appreciate your comments on that and I do hope that as, as that legislation seems to be moving forward now that I'm not there, that that will be part of that discussion, what to do with those funds.
All right.
And you have my full support on that.
All right, Commissioner Cornick.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you for all your hard work, Jeff and clerk, appreciate it. Couple of quick questions regarding elections. 123 precincts have the new machines, how many precincts is that, how many?
We've got about 250 precincts.
That's about half.
It fluctuates just by nature of population shift and the size of precincts, that, the number of precincts that we have. But we've got about 250 in 252 this year, so it was about half. Now I will say remember, while it's half the precincts, it is not half of our municipalities because we've had, you know, in November, we got the, the city elections and this way there were very few municipalities, so generally most of the townships have not implemented new election equipment.
So are we confident with their current equipment currently?
We are confident with our new equipment and the efforts that we're going through with our local clerks and we also are responsible for training election workers for municipalities with a lower certain population threshold, at least 10,000. And we continue to, we continue to train, not only to make sure they know, they are confident in administering the polls, counting the polls on election day, but that they're comfortable with the new equipment, that they're going to be helping citizens on election day.
So the speed of the results and accuracy is all based on what the city's townships turn in to us and how you put that together?
No, no, actually the results are transmitted to the county from each
Precinct.
As the polls close and they close out those machines, they're transmitted through a cellular, a secure cellular modem right directly to our office.
Well, that is a change.
It is instant phase, will we know?
Good news. And the final thing is looking at the expected voter registration. This year it's, last year was 10,000, we had 95,000. I'm a little surprised in that low, but do we expect more than 10,000 people to register in 2018 and how is that going? Because the number was almost 30,000 our last election year.
Now remember that, that number, that 9,500, that is the number of just individuals who registered to vote in county.
Oh, okay.
So that we process or that we took in and
But did you process the same 29,000 in 2016?
Yes, we did, presidential year.
Okay. So it's still, even though it's a gubernatorial year, are you expecting any more than what the hog year? I don't know, I just thought that number seemed a little bit low, so it's hard to check it out.
It's hard, it's hard to say.
So it's just
I would have to go back and look at what the number was in 2014 and I'd be happy to do that because that would probably give you a better comparison.
Sure.
Maybe even, maybe even 2010, the last time the, the governor's office opened. So I could provide those.
All right, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Sheriff, all the clerk lines, thanks for your passion for the job. It can't always be easy. Just a quick question on the filing fees. Now, because we charge a hundred dollars to get your name on the ballot and stuff like that, you know, get the money back, that's eliminated, who can run it not much? Am I not mistaken that if people only have a hundred dollars, they can do it the old fashioned way and get signatures and go door to door and turn that in and then there's no public inconvenience for someone that doesn't want to go and get the signature, correct?
That's correct. In 2010, I did the old fashioned way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Jared. Want to follow up again on the voter registration. 10,000 strikes me as being about, I don't know, is that about the same number of registered voters that we lose a year through death and voting? And is the, is the total registration about static?
That's actually a very good question. Now, again, because of the way the law is, our, our county, we are not, we do not take anybody off the rolls. That is the job of the local clerks or the secretary of state. For whatever reason, even though I get destitute as have everybody who died in this county and I know, but I know that they're right here in our office, I can't walk over to our elections department and say, hey, so and so just passed on, let's get them off the, let's clean up the voter roll on their behalf. Frankly, in my personal opinion, it's not the most efficient way the law is set up. So I, that's kind of an explanation to get to. I really don't know how many have dropped off, but I can, I can get that answer for you by going to the local clerks and the secretary of state. It won't take long either.
Well, that was going to be my follow up question. Who's, who is responsible to purge and make sure that they are cleaned up? You were saying that your department has no role and then it's only the secretary of state or the local?
We have no authority to. I would, I think, I think in a, for the sake of efficiency, if a resident, a registered voter in Kent County has passed away in Kent County and that is, information has come from our office, the law prevents me, prohibits me from being able to clean up that roll in, within our office. We do, I believe, once a week or once a month, we send death records out to every, every municipality that come into the county. So they, we do everything we can to ensure that they've got the information in terms of cleaning up the rolls from the results of deaths in Kent County. I just have no authority to back it up, check it on the back end. Whether or not they do that, that's on, that's on that roll. It would be very, it would, it would be an exercise in exercise in efficiency to provide multiple county clerks that are building this up.
But is that the Secretary of State, then, that ultimately is to monitor and make sure that the local officials are keeping their records correct?
All right, Commissioner Vank.
Yes, thank you, Clerk, for a fine report. Appreciate it very much and telling me what you're going to be about in the near future. My question is about the restructure of the work area, I heard you say, is that correct?
Yes.
And how much is that going to cost? And is that going to be a major restructure rather than just adding a room or whatever?
We don't know. I kind of just opened my thought. I mean, that is as pre, that is as far as we have gotten, is the thought that it needs to occur, it should occur. We have not put together any plan, any proposal. We just want to have the discussion with Al and what capabilities are, frankly, the building is not, it's not very functional in some respects. It took a long time to figure out how to get a printer from my office. So I know it won't be without challenges, and that's why I can't, I didn't just wake up and say, all right, let's start moving things here and there and everywhere. It's going to take, it's going to take a lot of input from our facility team and IT team to see what, you know, what the potential is, what we can do, what we can't do, why we can't do it, and then figure out what's the cost versus the benefits. Is it worth it? Are we even going to be here in five, 10 years? You know, those are, but that discussion can't take it.
As you brought that up, it reminded me of my dad's work environment from 1950, as I think, how it was set up there, or leave it to the Hoover days. So it probably needs a redo it, and I'll support you on that, but just ask the question and...
Yeah, I don't want to redecorate the White House or anything. I want to make it functional and, you know, and it works in discretion, provides discretion as well.
Well, I think that's a good idea, and as part of our measures, I think we need to, this is our basic work, what we're doing and what we're working on, but oh, by the way, we're working on technology, which you mentioned, we're working on the build-out or whatever it might be, and each department would be different, but I think, oh, by the way, this is what we're looking forward to, and the courts mentioned as well, what they did with DuMills and so forth. So I think every department should have that, oh, by the way, we're thinking about this or whatever.
All right. Any other questions for Clerk Lyons?
I just have a couple comments. I would like us to look at space needs for every department, so I am glad you brought that up, because I think it is 2018, and we all kind of operate differently. We don't need hundreds of square feet for filing cabinets, so I hope we do do that. Thank you for what seemed to be a pretty easy transition into the new election equipment. That was great. Hopefully, knock on wood, August and November go well. And then 1973, I'm no spring chicken, but that was before I was born, so hopefully, we can get some, you know, updated technology too. So thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, ma'am, Sheriff, Commissioner, I appreciate it.
All right, moving on to item five, appointment of the Veteran Services Committee. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to appoint John Baxter to the Veteran Services Committee to fill an unexpired four-year term ending December 31, 2021. A citizen's vacancy recently occurred on the Veteran Services Committee as a result of Paul Potter's passing, as you know. The vacancy was posted on the county's website for several weeks thereafter. An interview team consisting of Commissioners Manny Bolter, Dan Corndey, and Jim Tallon reviewed applications, interviewed potential candidates, and is recommending the appointment of John Baxter to the Veteran Services Committee.
All right. Removed by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner Corndey. Questions or comments on this issue? Commissioner Tallon.
Sheriff, just one quick comment, and that is that it's so great to see we have such incredibly well qualified people that have hired this master, and that makes it a little tougher to decide, but that's a good thing and a good thing for the input that will get into the work of the county.
Yep, great. All right, Commissioner Corndey.
Being part of the interview team, we did talk to Mr. Baxter, and he seemed like a very impressive individual, and I'm sure he'll do a very good job of placing a phenomenal number of Paul Potter. Thank you.
All right, all right, any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor of this appointment, say aye. Aye, all opposed? All right, moving on to item six, Board Commissioners' Request for Early Childhood Millage. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to the Commissioners to authorize placement of a proposition on the November 6, 2018 general election ballot for a dedicated millage for the provision of community-based early childhood development services for children up to age five and expected parents. This millage subcommittee recommends to the Board of Commissioners that a dedicated millage in the amount of .25 mils and for a duration of six years appear on the general election ballot this November with the stipulation that the funds be administered with the same model as currently used for the senior millage and with independent oversight in measuring of performance regularly reported to the county. A 2017 gap analysis and services and funding completed by First Steps Kent found a funding gap in prevention and early intervention services, which means that more than half of children eligible for services addressing early childhood development are not receiving these services. Community partners have identified evidence-based comprehensive services and supports that improve kindergarten readiness. The median home value in Kent County is approximately $180,000, with a minimal, median taxable value of $100,000. The median cost to Kent County taxpayers would be approximately $50 per year. The request was reviewed by administrative staff to ensure compliance with the Board's millage request policy and state statute. The request was also reviewed and recommended to be placed on the November 2018 general election ballot by the millage subcommittee, which includes Stan Steck, Emily Breevey, Harold Mass, and Phil Skaggs. This item was recommended for approval by the Finance and Physical Resources Committee at its June 19, 2018 meeting.
All right, do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by Commissioner Vank. Questions or comments on this? Commissioner Coleman.
So this, as you all know, my house is full of early childhood. I really just want to give my personal appreciation to the work of the subcommittee. The materials provided were clear, well organized, all the supporting materials. I found it super helpful as I studied up on this topic, so I just want to express my appreciation to everybody involved in that, the Commissioners and all staff. As you know, I've said this before, last time with the Zoo and Museum Millage, my opinion on tax increases is really, should be done in two circumstances. One is some kind of emergency where tax increase for a limited period of time to deal with that emergency is appropriate. The other is some kind of structural change to our community, to our government. So this is clearly not the first, but I've wrestled with the question of, is it the second? Is it a, is this supporting really a structural change in our community? And in some respects, I think it is, in, you know, the increasing refugee population in Kent County, et cetera. But I, I continue to think through this, and I think the question to me is not whether these programs are good, whether they're demonstrated to have positive impact on the community. That, to me, seems very clear. I'm familiar with, you know, Family Futures and other programs that exist now, and there's a lot of great work that happens there and clear, clear results. So the question is not whether these are good programs that have positive benefit. The question to me is, should we, you know, be putting this to have the entire community be paying for it? And that's a, that's a tough question. Again, in some sense, I think it is a community issue. It is a benefit to us all as children get a good start in life. On the other hand, I couldn't help but think back to this, this letter we received from, what's her name, Joanne Thompson, a 74-year-old widow in our community who's extremely concerned about the burden of additional tax on her with, with a fixed and limited income. So while personally, I, a lot of these programs are really fantastic, some of my children have benefited. I now have a child with cerebral palsy who's benefiting from programs and that fit in this area. So the question to me is, should the burden of that cost, you know, for my family's kids, for other families' kids, be put on people like Joanne in our community that would really struggle with it? And at the end of the day, I don't think so, and so because I'm in doubt about clarity, I'm going to be voting no on this today.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Any other comments or questions, concerns, anyone wants to share? Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner Skaggs is a history teacher here. I guess I tend to be the historian because I go back so far, so I hope you'll indulge me and let me recount a little history. I started out connecting with kids as an elementary teacher when I came out of college, taught first, second, and third grade, and then became the Assistant Director of Baxter Community Center where I was for 15 years, and helped oversee a childcare center that served 90 kids, many of them from low-income families, and saw firsthand the importance of that early childhood work and support. We also, while I was there at Baxter, started up a health clinic for families, primarily serving families with children, because it was such a need and it was so important to the development of those kids. I started on the Board of Commissioners in 93, and in 1995, I was fortunate to be, to be part of the Our Children, Our Future Initiative, which those community standards for kids were adopted by this county commission in 1995. And you can, you can see those online. I was prevent, I was privileged near the end of my first eight years on the board to be part of the Prevention Subcommittee, which took a look at just all that concrete evidence about the importance of services in early childhood, and was very glad to see, after I went off the board, Commissioner Corndey replaced me back then, the county commission chose to take tax dollars, a million and a half tax dollars, and invest it in early childhood services in this community. Fast forward to when I came back on the commission, commission in 2009, we were having difficult financial times in this community. Those dollars for early childhood services got ratcheted back. It wasn't services that we were required to provide, it was one of those areas that we ratcheted back, and we keep hearing this number of 700-some thousand that we're currently What I really struggle with, as Commissioner Coleman said, the evidence is there about how effective these programs are. This board chose to put before the voters, to ask the voters what they thought and whether they would support .5 mils for senior services, and that was approved. We asked the community, would you support .44 mils for museum services? And I struggle to understand why we wouldn't ask the community whether they would support similar taxes for these critical early childhood services. So I'm very supportive. I wish that we could see our way to provide what we have heard is adequate funding to really have an impact in this community, because we know there are certain services that you have to do to get this thing going in order to provide some of those other services. So very supportive and wish we could support it at a higher level than is being proposed.
Thank you, Commissioner Tallon. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I also agree with Commissioner Tallon that I would have rather saw it at 3.5, because I would like to make sure they have a budget that's not going to restrict them straight out of the gate to accomplish their outcomes. And from seeing early childhood programs since I was younger, money being put in, money being taken back during hard times and financial crisis throughout our state, it's good to see that we have another early childhood program coming to be, but like Mr. Tallon said, it would be great to see it at 3.5 and let the community judge if they think it's going to be enough. One of the reasons I do support it, because, like I said, growing up here, I've seen early childhood programs come and go, but one of the reasons I did support this, looking into it, seeing the caliber of people who are on the board, the caliber of people who are partners in this situation with this early childhood initiative, I think this is a group that can get the job done. I would be amiss not to speak up for my district where there's an issue of reading disparities between minorities and their majority counterparts. I think that's a real important issue that should be brought to the forefront and should be on those list of issues. We've been trying to combat that for a lifetime, but we can't give up on that, because I hear a lot of people in my community when they feel that they're impoverished. I hear the different solutions, all the way from voting to things that I don't understand why people would bring up revolution, but that's how desperate people are to want to change their lives when it comes to economic freedom here in America. But I know that one of the only reasons I was able to come out of poverty myself was through education, through knowledge, wisdom, and understanding, and developing talents, and keeping up with today's technology. So I definitely support this, and I just want to say that it's very important that we do try to lower that gap between these reading disparities, because this education is something that's going to lower our prison systems, our school-to-prison pipeline. I just want the people that's working on it to know how important their job is, and it's definitely something I'll be supporting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Sheriff. So I guess I will start off by saying that, making it, I think, clear what we're actually doing here. We are voting to send to the full board a recommendation that puts this millage request on the ballot. We're not raising anybody's taxes. This is the only way that, that the community can let its priorities and its willingness to pay for those priorities be done solely through going through a ballot proposal. This body and the full board simply can't do that. We are simply allowing the voters to have a chance to tell us what their priorities are. And so I think that we should allow them to do that at a rate that is being recommended to us. In fact, I would say, given what I have seen so far, that we should consider doing what Commissioner Ponstein mentioned as the old-fashioned style, and perhaps come up with a way in which this body can be, can be worked around and letting organizations go straight to the voters by petition and to put it on the ballot. I don't know if that's state law or local ordinance, I'd certainly like to find out, but it seems to me that, that there have been an argument to save the voters from themselves, and I would like to allow the voters to have a full say. So let me start, that was not the start, that was the preamble. Let me start by saying where most of us agree, and that's the subcommittee report, which I did not vote for, but solely did not vote for based on the rate. I think there are at least three arguments in here that are fairly clear. One, which we've already heard, is the incredible return on investment. So about six lines up from the top, "The proposed millage will very likely result in a significant short and long-term savings in the current costs of public services in areas such as healthcare, education, workforce participation, criminal justice, and law enforcement." You go down a little bit more, and again, based on all this data, right, this is my binder, it's gotten huge, based on all this data, we know we've got a $3 to $13 return on investment here. So let's do some investing, I would say, but this was, but this was the first thing that we, that we could agree on, and we saw that in bright beginnings, and just to mention again, where we're going to see this savings in reducing referrals to Child Protective Services, incarceration... see this savings in reducing referrals to child protective services, incarceration rates, reliance on public assistance, and improving educational outcomes and ultimately workforce readiness. And we've got big changes coming, not just kindergarten readiness, but we've got the new state-manded third-grade level reading requirements that are coming up, which having talked with teachers and administrators in my school districts, is going to take a lot to implement. And we really need to do right by our kids and make sure that they are ready to not be held back in third grade, but to be successful at that level. And again, based on all of this Subcommittee work and reams of data that scholars have done, we know that this period of 0 to 3 is critical in making sure that everyone in this community has an opportunity to be ready for that kindergarten grade, ready for that kindergarten test, and ready to be successful in reading at the right time. The other reason, or I should say, the other thing that I think we agree on, or at least we agree on as a Subcommittee, was that this was not an ISD function. The ISD is concerned with K through 12. This milage is concerned with 0 through 3. And the report states that oversight of dedicated milage revenue should be placed at the county level. Because in large part, what we're talking about here is public health, making sure these kids are healthy enough to be able to learn and to have the brain development necessary to do so, which is a clear function of county government. The third issue that was discussed, and I think there was some robust conversations on it, was the issue of whether this should be a state and federal-funded program or a county-funded program. I think that, as we know, Commissioner Steck is an attorney and is a fantastic wordsmith, but I think that what we said here is that all levels of government should have this under their purview. Now, I've heard several reasons for no. One was why don't this switch over to the ISD? I think we've got the answer on that in a memo from First Steps. And again, the ISD is required to work on K through 12 and this is not what we're doing. Two, on the state funding, I would say that it does not make sense for Kent County, that it wants to be a leader in this country, a leader in this region, a leader in this state, to wait for what is essentially a dysfunctional state government to come help us out. I know that there was, at the Econ Club, maybe a decade ago, someone came in and said, "Unfortunately, you can't secede from the state of Michigan because it's a basket case. But what you can do is tie yourself to Chicago." I think we need to do what we can do for ourselves in local governments and this county. Wait forever for the state, we're going to do wrong by the kids that are being born now and into the future. If the state does come forward, it's likely to be about expanding preschool to fourth graders, which would be a lot of money, which would be extraordinarily helpful. Then the baton goes from 0 to 3 to the state, to the school districts. Let's hope that that's what works out, but I think that we'd wait forever for state funding for these sorts of programs that we're talking about. The third reason to vote no that I've heard is about milage fatigue. Again, I'm not sure that it's up for us to decide about milage fatigue. I think it's up for the voters to decide. I think if you look at the recent election results, there's certainly no indication that there is voter fatigue. Our own staff and their background materials has told us that we have the 15th lowest overall milage rate of the 83 counties in Michigan. I would suspect that amongst the 10 largest, we're probably last in our overall milage rate. Some of that we can be fairly proud of, I think. But what I think that it states is that there is room, should the voters decide that this is something that they want to approve, that there is certainly room in budgets to do so. Now, moving on to the rate, I have to say that it's my opinion that slashing this rate in half was done purely for political reasons, which is disappointing. I don't believe that I heard a single policy argument or reason for the cut. I didn't hear that, oh, this program on page seven probably is not as effective. What I heard was this is the only way that we can get the votes. But we're going to find out if that's the case. I think that in the memo that we should all have from June 7 from First Steps about why .35 is a rate that they can live with, that's a cut down from .5, but a reasonable rate that will allow them to do the most effective services at around $4 million a year, as opposed to what cutting it to .25 would do only $2 million a year. So I'm concerned that at .25, we're doing wrong by our kids, we are not taking the bold steps necessary to be successful into the future, to do what's right by our kids and to do what's right by our whole entire community by having a ready workforce. I think we can bring in the right place and they will tell you that workforce talent is the reason people will move to Kent County in the future. So, with that, I think that this vote is really a statement of where our values are, but really a statement of, are we going to give the community a chance to vote on the proposal that First Steps has brought us, to make a statement about their values? So with that, I move to amend the motion to increase the rate to the level of .35.
All right, we have a motion. Support motion by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner Womack to amend the action request from a .25 to a .35. Okay. Is there any questions, comments, discussion on that issue?
Amendment.
On the amendment. Commissioner Talon. No?
Over.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you. First, a point of clarification, if I might. If the Legislative Human Resource Committee were to amend this proposal to a .35 after the Finance Committee has approved it at a .25, does it go back to the Finance Committee for consideration, again, this time on a .35 level? Does it go directly to the full board? What happens to it?
Our standing rules basically are set up like a series of dominos. It is first to the Finance Committee, Finance recommends to LHR, LHR recommends to the Board. The rules are silent on the need to go back to Finance if there is amendment at either LHR or the Board. So from the base of our rules as written, it would continue to go forward as amended.
To the full board. To the full board?
Right.
Okay. Well, so let me comment a little bit and I apologize to Commissioner Skaggs if you didn't hear any of the rationale for why a .25 was considered by the Subcommittee, other than the political expediency as he suggests. Obviously, I support it and I'll address my support for the proposal when we get out of the motion to amend. But I did believe that there is a substantive reason for why the committee chose to go with a .25 instead of a .5 or .35, as was also attempted at the Subcommittee. And it has to do with the consideration of a number of factors, substantive factors, including the fact that a number of the members of the committee felt that there continues to be an obligation and interest in varying degrees at the state and the federal level to also address some of these key issues. And so, in a effort in which this is clearly a new move, it is a bold move by this county to consider moving into addressing the gap as defined, there is also conversation at those levels and the thinking being that over the course of the projected time period, there would be a potential change in those funding dynamics and those efforts. And so, reserving the ability to see what happens there was one of the reasons for the caution. The second is that we also see that at the county level, we will be facing a number of other demands over the near future. I don't know exactly what they're going to look like, but there will be likely additional policy demands that will call upon us to do something similar, to submit this to the voters, to again, balance what is the need compared to what's the capacity to pay taxes. So a lesser amount was thought to be indicated as a consequence of that. And the third is, this is a bold new move and we all believe that the evidence is supportive, that there are reasons to believe that this can have a significant change in some of the directions of how we deal with these issues and the costs on what it takes to deal with these issues. At the same time, it is a relatively new level of participation and activity by the county. And so, trust and verify, which is something I believe is a critical component of this, would suggest that we're not closing the gap anyway with this program. The gap is a $99 million to a $200 million challenge. So whether it's at .5 or whether it's at .25 is not going to close the gap, but it is going to demonstrate our capacity to effectively deal with the gap. So taking it in a stepped version by way of a .25, see what it looks like, see what it generates by way of savings, see what kind of results it generates, and then come back and go to the voters again if in fact it demonstrates the value that we think it will. And if in fact that the state has not stepped to the plate, as we had hoped they would, makes more sense. So stepping it back at .25 is not intended to send the wrong message that we're not interested in the program, it is to suggest that we are interested in the program, that we do want to see this attempted, we do want to see what it produces by way of results before we go to the next step. So those are the justifications for why the Subcommittee put a .25 instead of a .35 or .5.
All right, any other comments on the amendment? Just the amendment. Commissioner Womack.
When we talk about closing the gap, as I see it, either we're going to do this or we're not going to do it. And if we're going to do it, I just don't believe that we should be limiting them to 2.5. I support the 3.5 mainly because I've seen so many millages have come through here and they embellish. And I read the newspaper and they say it's a crisis. And they say, "We're going to stop this service and we're going to do that." And the people jump up and they say, "Okay, we're going to support it." And a lot of those millages that have been embellished have been supported by this commission. They've been supported by boards who are connected to those, who have those millages coming through. We have one milage where we even had people not associated with this Board, of course, because we got some outstanding people on this Board. And whenever they speak, even when we disagree, I know they're coming from their heart, I know they're coming from their educated opinions. So my opinion is just one of our commissioners. So there were things that came on one milage, like I said, it didn't come from any of our fine commissioners. I stand by every one of them when it comes to their credibility. But there were things in my neighborhood where they were saying to vote against a milage was racist because these services were going to be stripped from the African-American community. That was an embellishment, that was an outright lie. African-Americans who didn't support the milage would cause sellouts in Uncle Tom's. And one of my favorite commissioners today said there should only be a milage if there's a crisis. There is an educational crisis in Grand Rapids, in Kentwood, there is an educational crisis in Kent County, there's an educational crisis in America. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about this educational crisis, I know it off the top of my head. African-American females outnumber African-American males 20 to 1 on college campuses. If that's not a crisis, we have kids in intermingling camps right now who are being separated from their mothers and fathers. Some will make it back, and I'm not here to take a political side on that, some will make it back to their parents, but some of them are going to end up in Kent County. So we can have English learners that are going to need help making sure that tomorrow they can be productive citizens in Kent County, that no matter what their beginning was running from one country to another, that they are human beings. And if we bring them here, it takes a village to raise a child. They're all our children, no matter what color, whether you grew up on the poor white side of town or you're a white child that has maybe alcoholic parents that don't care about your education, where you're an African-American child, where your family's working in factories or somewhere and don't have time to tutor you after school. We have an educational crisis. If you walk through the jails here, and that's not taking nothing from our fine sheriff department, I'm glad their milage went through because they cared about that whether you're here for a crime or not, we have to keep human dignity and decency to a certain level and it takes money to have you a facility to help rehabilitate you. So that was a milage that I did support, but when you walk through the jails, where you're a commissioner and you get a letter from the jail and every other word is spelled wrong. Not only are the words spelled wrong, the way they're using English is totally like they could not write a resume. I can't believe that our county doesn't understand, we have an educational crisis. And that educational crisis leads to all these other things in life, from incarceration to a lifetime on welfare, to people who can't write a resume, but they can think of 100 different ways to go to DHS and get new money. To child protective services, we have an educational crisis and we have a chance. As Commissioner Steck said, that gap is so wide, we may not ever close the whole gap, but we have to do the best of closing that gap because if we don't close that gap, every other gap goes further and further until the point, like I said before, people who have not had the correct education, a lot of times find themselves in positions where they have no choice but to blame other people. And that's why they feel so comfortable to go out sometimes and hurt other people or feel they had a right to steal or take from other people. Or any mirages of things I hear in meetings on how you can come out of oppression and poverty. I'm going to keep it short and end right there and just say that I just want the commissioner to know, in my opinion, this is one of the most important millages that we have brought here. I haven't spoke out on any millages, I haven't spoken against any millages, but I've seen a lot of embellishments about crisis. This is a true crisis, we have an educational crisis. I hope we take the opportunity to up it to 3.5. We should have gave them the 4.5. If we don't think that it's going to make a difference, then maybe we should be more involved with those asking for the milage to help them and guide and make sure it makes a difference. And we should let the people decide, but I am totally in support to raising it to 3.5 and letting this community know, this city, this county, every township, that we do have an educational crisis.
All right, any other comments on the .35 amendment? Commissioner Talon.
Thank you Chair. Just a reflection on a couple of points. One is, again, remembering that we began the prevention initiative 16 years ago. The amount of funding for that has gone down. We have not gotten federal and state participation for these last 16 years and I am not optimistic, perhaps unlike some of my colleagues, that that's going to change over the next six years. I can be hopeful, but maybe it's just because I'm an old guy and I haven't seen it in these 16 years. Second thing is, I'm very concerned about whether this initiative will be able to demonstrate its ability to provide value. I think we heard back from First Steps that at the .25 rate, it's going to be difficult to do that. There are certain basic foundational pieces to this, including evaluation, including some of the infrastructure that needs to be put in to identify developmental delays and so on. They have said to us that in order to be able to do this work well and be able to demonstrate that value, the .35 is a minimum to do that. And I think we need to take that into account as we vote on this. we need to take that into account as we vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions or concerns, Commissioner Skaggs?
So just two quick points. One, I think on the issue of verification, we have all the verification that I think we need. We are special people here in Kent County and frequently tell ourselves that, but our kids' brains are made the same way as other kids' brains in other countries and in other states and in other counties. This is going to work. Let's give them the funds necessary so that when we come back at this in six years, that we can see actual progress here. If we slash this in half, and it's not, I'm accepting much of what, well, let's not say I'm accepting it, but I'm hearing much of what Commissioner Steck is saying, and it's not the first time I heard that. And that is why I'm making a request for point-three-five and not for point-five, which is my preference. But it's the, the reason that I think we should move to point-three-five is I think that it is a reasonable amount, the minimum amount that they've told us that they can show success. And it's not that I am not hearing these answers, these concerns about, well, maybe the state will come in, or maybe there are future millages coming. I'm concerned about the now. And the now is, and the next six years, is that it's unlikely that we're going to see state funding, as, as Commissioner Talon said, and let's give them every chance to succeed here. It was the cutting it in half, it was the number, that to me seemed arbitrary, and not the decision to cut it, which I will unfortunately have to ask to.
All right, any other comments? Commissioner Steck?
Question, if it is not amended here, is the motion subject to amendment at the full?
Yes.
Any other comments on the point-three-five amendment?
Roll call, vote.
Commissioner Bonk? Motion to have a roll call on the amended amendment?
You don't have a question?
All right, so all in favor of?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Coleman?
No.
Commissioner Corndyke?
No.
Commissioner Ponstein?
No.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Steck?
No.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonk?
No.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes.
Yes and six? All right. Chair Bolter. No. All right, so we're back to the original request of point-two-five. We've got a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Commissioner Steck?
So the last two weeks, the question that I have been asked most often has been, what's going on with the LRE? But a close second has been a question, something like, why would a fiscal conservative support this proposal? Well, I do support it, and I support it in part because I think that there is convincing evidence that the current safety net that we all support still allows significant numbers of our children to fall through the cracks. Support it in part because I think despite the fact that we have spent significant dollars in our existing systems and service, we unfortunately still have a long way to go in our education and reading performance levels. We are down to, what, near the bottom in our third grade reading, notwithstanding all of the money that we put into our existing systems. And we've learned that recently our, our workforce isn't up to snuff, and when it comes to the national search entities that measure the quantity and capability of our workforce, it's not capable yet. Though we don't get all of the companies coming in here we might otherwise get. However, I am sensitive to the questions that Commissioner Coleman raises. Why, why would we want to get into this? Should we even get into the responsibility of taking care of these children and doing this kind of program? Well, I think frankly, as a society, we are already all in. When you consider how much money this county, the taxpayers of this county contribute to educate our children to the point of being capable, contributing members of our community. I think we have about a hundred and seventy thousand students between K and 12th grade in Kent County, maybe a hundred and fifty thousand of them are in the public system, I don't know what the exact breakout is. Department of Ed says that it costs twelve thousand, five hundred and nine dollars on average to educate each one of those kids per year. That tells me that the Kent County taxpayers already are all in to the tune of more than a billion dollars a year. When we look at what we spend for health educa, for, for health services, Medicaid, Healthy Michigan, and other support services, in this county, it has to be close to a billion dollars. Already, the taxpayers are all in at that kind of number. What does it cost for us to provide policing agencies, court systems, judges? I think it's a hundred thousand dollars per year per officer is the recommended or indicated cost, that's, we have probably twelve hundred officers in this county. We are all in already as the taxpayers. And the trajectory that I see going forward is we will continue to spend more and more and more taxpayer money to continue to do the same thing we do in education, healthcare, policing, court systems, criminal justice. It says that we will have about a four-point-seven increase per year in health costs. At those numbers, that's fifty million dollars more pressure on taxpayers, just in that. Maybe a one or two percent increase in education, that's another twenty-five million dollars a year. But are the cost increases for policing agencies, for courts, significant? So when I hear that question about should we be doing this, and is it really this responsibility to deal with these issues, I say we're already entirely in, and the trajectory of where we are heading as taxpayers is substantial increases every year in what it's going to cost. So is this change, is this show us an opportunity to change that trajectory? And that's what I'm most moved by, by this. There is evidence to indicate, documented evidence to indicate that we can see as much as three dollars return on every dollar invested, maybe as much as thirteen dollars, depending upon the studies you look at. And these are not just national studies, though there are national studies. Some of these studies come out of Kent County's experience. Now, the studies are relatively old, and so I have said that I think that we need to look carefully at how this impacts the current environment. But I'm convinced that as I look around, what would be a reasonable investment? Somebody that tells me that I can get an investment of between a three-hundred percent and thirteen, one-thousand-three-hundred percent return, but I'm happy if I get six, seven, eight percent out of my portfolio, that's a pretty phenomenal rate of return. Will it actually be there? I don't know, but the kind of promises that this suggests is the kind of promise that I don't think a reasonable taxpayer can pass up. It's an opportunity to have a radical change and redirection on how we address these situations. Instead of the projections that I see of more, more, more with less, less, less results, this suggests better results at less cost. That's why I think it's important to give the taxpayers the opportunity to do this, and that's why I support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Well, there's been a lot said in the past forty-five minutes. I heard Commissioner Skaggs said that state is dysfunctional, but that's an understatement. They've been dysfunctional for a long time. They're always driven by crises. What they are good at is shrugging their, their responsibility and putting it onto county schools and cities. You only have to look to indigent defense. Are they going to fully fund that? No. You have to look at the courts they gave us. Are they fully funding that? No. Revenue sharing, are they fully funding that? No. So promises have been made, promises have been kept. I heard the word educational crisis. I've heard that word when I was elected in nineteen eighty to the Grand Old School. Everything's a crisis. That's how we fear the taxpayer and to give them more money. Schools were told that the lottery was going to be this windfall for schools. What they found out is for every dollar that the lottery raises, the state took away a dollar. The schools had to sue the state in Durant one for special education mandates. They won that. They sued again in Durant two. We got Prop A that was supposed to level the playing field for all, funding for all schools. That never happened. There's still substantial gaps between poor districts and rich districts. We have a special ed millage in this community. We have a, a school enhancement millage in this committee. We keep throwing money at the problem. Is it needed? Yeah, you could argue it, but I probably got twenty other things that I could argue the exact same thing as that money's needed there. The whole system is broke, from conception to death. How we educate, how we treat people in this lifelong learning journey is just wrong. By throwing more money on it is not going to correct that. I've, I've heard all of you agree that we're not going to be able to count on the state for the money. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous. They will spend billions and billions of dollars to attract businesses to the state, and then those same businesses then say, well, we don't have an educated workforce, we don't have a skilled workforce. Well, maybe if we would have taken some of the billions that they shed to them and brought it to this level, maybe we wouldn't have to go back to the taxpayer again and again and again. And there is a difference between taxpayers in this county. And the way millages are set up and they are run, the person that's living in the northern part of my district that's out of limited income, doesn't know if they're going to be able to put food on the table, doesn't know how they're going to pay their health insurance bill, that, that eighty dollars means a lot. But it's the eighty dollar that's tacked on to every single targeted millage that's been put down there. They do not have the voting block to pass millages. That's the thing with millages, is that there's a certain voter block that's always going to get it, those that can afford to pay that tax. And what it leaves behind are the ones that can't afford. And their situation in life isn't getting better, it's getting more difficult. So like the zoo millages and the other millages, I am against this. Going to the taxpayer time and time again is not the answer. Taxpayers pay too much money. We have the wrong priorities, and that's something that isn't being addressed. And by passing another enhancement millage will just set the groundwork for another one, and another one, and another one, and another one. Our priorities are wrong when it comes on how we educate and train our citizens of this state.
All right. Commissioner Womack, did you want to speak another time?
Yes. It just seems that a lot of people are happy with the way things are because they may have never found themselves on the other side of the fence. You know, when I think of a twelve-year-old that came up with this poem, twelve years old. "The world's concerned with an endangered whale, a eagle that can't fly, a ship that can't sail, but what about mama's baby? They don't educate me, they alienate me." That's twelve-year-old kids coming up, who put into a poem, "They don't educate me, they alienate me." So to be at twelve years old and already know, I need this education. To see that we say we give twelve thousand a year to a student, but at the same time, we all know we give thirty thousand a year or more to hold somebody in prison, we become so comfortable with saying we give these kids twelve thousand, and it's really seventy-five hundred, depending on what taxable area that you live in. When Amazon tells us you need a more educated workforce, to me, that's more proof of how important education is, and how we are not invested in education enough. The money that we're spending right now on putting children in camps, that if we were going to put them in camps, we could have just found everybody at the border and said, go back home, go free, but we got the money to put you in camps, and we got the money to pay nonprofits to build more camps for children. We all ran on jobs, education, safe streets. Today, I just, I just have to say, we have things like the Silver Line, where we spent like twenty-six million, maybe not as a county, but the different sources, and ever since we built the Silver Line, we've had more traffic jams on our highways, we got more traffic jams up Division Avenue, we got people in that area who talk about it, we got businesses along that area who didn't get more traffic because traffic only has one lane now, we got businesses going out of business along that area. But we never had this type of conflicted conversations about any millage until it came to education, and I'm going to quit raising my hand speaking, but I just feel so strong about education and the fact that not only are we shortchanging education, we're not giving the public a chance to decide on what this group asks for. They asked to bring this, and not only did we cut it, we, we cut it down to a level that once we give them this little money, we're still going to want the same outcomes, and then we're going to be saying, no, you didn't deliver these outcomes. So I really feel bad for the group because the burden upon them now is so high, and if it passes, they still have to come up with those outcomes.
All right, Commissioner Coleman?
Try to be brief here, the, I just wanted to comment on a few additional things. One, I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this. Some of the arguments are, are very persuasive, I think, to, and some of the passions, specifically Commissioner Womack, I think is very persuasive. I, I do think in the past we have had conflicted conversations about millages and taxes, and I had, I think that's a good thing. I think it's a good thing that we're assessing our best methods to invest, our best investments to make. I think that's a, a very positive thing. And I, I would like to just touch on the let the voters decide kind of argument. I would support Commissioner Skaggs' suggestion that voters do have a method to go straight to the ballot. I think that's a great idea. I think that the process we have now, this, this deliberation here does have a purpose, and the purpose is, the data, if I recall correctly, suggested, you know, seventy-one percent support for this millage by the general public, and twenty-nine percent would be against. And I think one of the things that is a burden on me is considering people like, like Joanne that really have, would be, increase their burden when they're already struggling to take her fixed income, you know, to, to keep herself in her home. I, I think of a guy I know in my district, he's just north of Seventy-Second Street. He has really struggled with, you know, the increasing property values down in Byron Center because, you know, a few years back, he was in a, in a car accident and is now mentally incapacitated to the, to the point he can't work, his only income source is, is fixed. So I, I really feel a, a sense of, as we consider, as we do have these conflicted considerations, that we really remember those folks because most of us can't afford eighty bucks a year to support good things like this. So the let the voters decide argument, I think that'd be good to have a method for them, for groups to go straight to the ballot, but as we do have this process, I think our job is to consider Joanne and my neighbor and others who, who may not have a strong voice on these kind of things, and may suffer the most from the, the cost burden. I'd also just like to point out, what I, I think is clear is that investment in programs like this can be accomplished in other ways other than taxes, other than millages on, you know, people's property. And that, I think, you know, is something that I would wish to be considered if indeed this doesn't get approved by the voters, that some of these programs do get extended through other, other sources of funding. And then last- And then lastly, I'll just comment on the 1,300% argument, the, I think it was between $3 and $13 per dollar invested. Not to give advice on how to get this passed, but I think these programs really stand on their own merits, and that argument makes people suspicious, at least a lot of people I know, because you extrapolate and say, "Well, why not invest $80 million a year? We'd have a billion dollars in benefit every year to Kent County." So, I think the programs and the benefits stand on their own, and that argument is a stretch that might dissuade people against this and against trying this.
All right. Commissioner Steck?
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Coleman, I guess I see it just the opposite way because I do appreciate the frustration that Commissioner Ponstein articulates. Because the fact is that our taxpayers in this county pay an incredible amount of money every year to address, how are we going to take care of our youth? How are we going to train them? How are we going to get them ready to be adults? As I said before, we spend billions of dollars. And what's the future that we have to promise to Joanne or whoever else is out there as a taxpayer, as you described? The future that we are giving them right now is incredibly costly systems that will cost us more next year and the year after that, and the year after that. Business as usual will mandate we have to put in probably another $75 million every year just to keep the same level of what we have now. 75 million, probably more, but at least 75 million. That's just to keep what we're doing. That's business as usual. That's what we're offering them. That's their future. Or, if you think this is a game changer, if you think this provides an opportunity to shift the gear, to be able to look at some of these challenges and say, "You know what? There may be a better way of doing that. Yes, it will cost us a little money now, but if the payback, just look at the financial payback, is that the future you can offer these taxpayers is reducing the taxing pressure, 3%, 10%, 100%, 300%, 1,300%? I don't know what the number is. But any return that begins to suggest that we can curb where we're otherwise headed, change that trajectory, is an opportunity I think it's worth offering to them. So, I don't look at this as a perspective that says, "Look, can our taxpayers afford $50 a year?" I look at it from the perspective that says, "Our taxpayers are going to be asked to pay substantially more than that next year and the year after that and the year after that." Maybe the taxes will come incrementally in intervals, but the cost of these services will continue to go if we don't change the direction. So, is this going to generate that kind of return? I don't know. All the evidence suggests that it will generate significant return by investing dollars now and changing that trajectory later. I'm intrigued with the idea of, "Let's put in $3 billion because then we can save enough money, we could write a check to everybody," right? Well, obviously, I mean, there's a point in which the issue that we're dealing with here will have a point where it'll level off, and I don't know where that is. I'm sure it's below 2.5. So, I'm comfortable, and that's why I'm comfortable recommending, I'm comfortable that we will see significant returns. And what you can tell Joanne or whoever else is in your district, why would you do this? It is because I believe we need to change the trajectory. If we don't do something radical to change that, we're going to be in a disastrous situation. Where is healthcare costs going? One-third of our overall budget at the federal level? And that's not changing unless we change how we do business. So, I guess I'm reiterating, I'm convinced this is an opportunity to change how we do business. Business as usual is not acceptable to me. It's worth the challenge.
Any other comments? Commissioner Skaggs?
So, it appears from the votes at Finance Committee and some of the statements from some of the commissioners here today, although I don't know how other people are going to vote, that the majority party does not have enough votes to pass this at .25. In order for this to pass, it's going to have to be based, I think, by principled, reasonable bipartisan compromise, which we tried to do with our amendment. I am going to vote yes on this at .25. I do not want to vote yes on this at .25 because I think that we are not giving them the funds that they need to show success down the road. But I will move this to get forward, to get it out of this committee. I want to urge Republican leadership, this committee, Finance Committee, and of the whole board, to come to us and let us find a way to get to 10 votes. Let us find a way to get to 13 votes at a bipartisan compromise that can work for everyone.
All right. We've had a lot of discussion on this. I think everyone's had a chance to talk. We're going to have more discussion at full board. I just have a couple, I'll keep it brief, comments. This is why I love serving with all of you. We're all so passionate. We care about our community. We love our community. We love our districts. We are so thankful for the people who brought this forward because obviously, they care. There is no doubt the work that everyone is doing, you know, again, I've said it several times, I don't come from this county, and it is just, I'm so thankful and so impressed with everything that we have and all our resources and the commitment to each other. So, I think that this should be a proud moment, though it was long and many of us had to take a bathroom break, but we all are here for the right reasons, and so I want to say that. I am not going to be supporting this. A couple of quick reasons. I am concerned about the outcomes. I did read the report. I am almost frustrated that we spend so much money, especially on education. You know, I'm raising two boys. I want our reading levels better than they are. They should be better than they are, and we should demand that they're better than they are. We should demand this for everything that we spend taxpayer dollars on. So, I am concerned that we're not going to get the outcomes, we're not going to be able to measure the outcomes because the group is telling us they're not going to be able to do that. That's concerning to me. A lot of this money's going to go for home visits. We have agencies that are already providing that service. Some of them have been doing this work for a generation of kids, yet they still don't have the outcomes-based data that some of us are hopeful on, reading, you know, kindergarten readiness, reading level, graduation rates, all those things that we need to make sure we're measuring. I hope, when and if this moves forward, that the committee that comes together really looks at that because a lot of state programs don't do any measurements. They just throw money at it, or we create another program. And, you know, I have 17 millages in my township alone. So, I'm trying to do a balancing act with serving everyone. It's not that I don't appreciate everything that the subcommittee did or the committee members. We all care about this community, and we're, I think, many people who may not support it, it's not because we don't care about kids or we don't think that some of these programs are valuable. They are valuable. We do fund them with existing tax dollars, and I think that we just have to do a balancing act of serving everyone. So, with that, all in favor of this motion? We have a motion in a second.
I move for a roll call vote.
Okay.
Or?
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner Womack. Pam, call the roll. Commissioner Coleman?
No.
Commissioner Hornike?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponstein?
No.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Steck?
Yes.
Commissioner Fong?
Yes.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes.
Chair Bolter? No. Commissioner Talan?
Yes.
Six yes, three no, motion passes. All right. Thank you for that spirited debate. On to item seven, miscellaneous. Is there any? Commissioner Ponstein?
Well, because I'm assuming Thursday's meeting's going to be a lot longer than this one, so I wanted to get these comments in quick. Plus, I'm dealing with some family issues right now, so I don't know. Whether I'll be at that meeting or not is still up to me here. I was at the MAC Board of Directors meeting, last county commission meeting, that's why I wasn't here. What I wanted to make is that you're going to be getting probably stuff in the mail in the near future. MAC has rewritten their bylaws. A lot of it's just cleanup language. It's told that the document's now shorter than the previous, which, one of the big changes is that we're going to be reviewing MAC Board of Directors are elected. Big things are, we're going to expand memberships, organizations that are county-related, but...
All right. So, all in favor of...
Taking room for one of those seats. One of the at-large memberships on the MAC Board of County Commissioners. I hold one of those three seats. The way it's set up, mine's not in jeopardy. We've also changed, we've added a term, three-year terms for the MAC Board of Directors that may be changed when we relook at it this year, but I just wanted you to make aware of those big changes. I think expanding the MAC Board to include other county associations is a good thing. We need a lot of people at the table because, once again, Lansing's not listening to us, especially a lot of our state legislators. There are some warriors for counties and cities, but they're very few, and the priorities at the state are not the same.
Thank you for all your service on the MAC Board. Commissioner Ponstein, Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. I note on the agenda for Thursday is also the proposal from the Lakeshore Regional Entity for the ISF Auxiliary Funding Structure and Agreement. We gave a fairly lengthy presentation to the Finance Committee on some of the background and structures of that. Did not do that to this committee, so I simply invite any of you that have questions about that, please feel free to reach out to me. I'd be happy to fill you in, share my flow chart, and give you what information I can.
And I would suggest that anyone that does have questions for Commissioner Steck on that issue because of Thursday's long agenda, please get those answered. That would be great.
Do what I can.
Any other miscellaneous today? Commissioner Womack?
I just want to thank all the commissioners for their comments today as we all had different opinions, but I think everybody expressed themselves and showed that they put much study into what they were talking about. And I guess want to let everybody know that I definitely respect everyone at this table and am proud to be a part of this Board of Commissioners.
All right. Anything else? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.